This is just a work session. So about the Equal School Day, I think. So do you want to kick it off?
Board President, Marcus. Board members, thank you so much. We are coming back to you today with Equal School Day. We presented this to you earlier in the semester. Went out, got some feedback, engaged a good number of stakeholders, and have our revised proposal for implementation on the 21-22 school year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robin Fernandez and Rob Price.
Good evening, President Marcus, members of the board. Dr. Anderson, I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to be here in person talking to you about the Equal School Day. What a joy. What a joy to be back. And so I will briefly, since we have talked about the Equal School Day for Dr. Anderson, I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to be here in person talking to you about the Equal School Day. What a joy. What a joy to be back. And so I will briefly, since we have talked about the Equal School Day for Dr. Anderson, I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to be here in person talking to you about the Equal School Day. Nothing like hearing your voice played back for you. So I will just briefly re-ground us in the impetus for the work of the Equal School Day. Since we have been talking about this for so long over so many years, I'll just remind us briefly that, you know, this stems from the work originally tasked to the Ideal School Day Task Force. And among a variety of recommendations that we've been working to implement since 2016 include the recommendations of a later high school start time, which as we know, we were able to implement in 2019, but also the recommendation of a standardized seven-hour school day for the reasons we've talked about a lot, so that we know that we are doing our very best for all students in every single school across the entire district. And then finally, standardized professional learning time for our educators. And we know based on what we have experienced traditionally, but also in the year-plus now that we have been experiencing the pandemic, that both academic support for students and social-emotional support for students is more important now than probably ever before. So the goals that we just talked about are the goals that we have been working to implement since 2019. One thing that is worth mentioning is what it does say, that third bullet under goals is that one of the biggest barriers that we have had in implementing the recommendations of this group were because the cost of transportation was pretty astronomical. And so the pursuit of a cost-neutral or a low-cost transportation method as a vehicle for, huh, no pun intended, as a vehicle for being able to implement the recommendations of the Ideal School Day Task Force was one of our main barriers. So there's been a little bit of confusion as of late that we want to reiterate that this is a teaching and learning initiative. This is not an operational efficiency initiative, right? That was not the original impetus for this work. This is just a way for us to be able to finally implement the recommendations that we have wanted to for so long. And then finally, as I said before, what is the importance of moving forward with this? Well, we know that reducing disparities, but also doing our best for every student in every building across the system is at the core of our work has always been, but really the core of the work of our strategic plan altogether for all students. So what would we do with the additional time during the school day? We know that academic support is very, very important. But as we talk with teachers and leaders across the system, you know, they are really excited about the possibility of additional time in the school day. Because as that quote from Principal Brent Caldwell from Metallark School says, "You know, we always felt like the SEL work was the first to get squeezed out when we didn't have enough hours in the day." So the shorter the school day, we know that the conversation increasingly becomes, what is it that we leave out? And in our community, we know that every experience that a child has in our school during the school day is of value. We value not only academic support, we value individualized academic and social-emotional support. We value physical movement during recess and lunch. We value universal breakfast in the buildings where that exists, and we value lunch where it does not detract from instructional time. We value specials. And just as a reminder, in the original recommendations that we did implement in 2016, the equal time for all specials, art, music, and PE, and the collaborative planning time that that provides was an initial recommendation from the Ideal School Day Task Force, and that is based on a seven-hour day. And so when we are able to have a longer school day, many fewer things are talked about as what do we have to leave out? And many more parts of that holistic approach to a child's experience is what we can leave as part of the school day. So the other recommendation that came from this group was universal professional learning time. So if we think of this as the partner piece to the strategic plan, you know, if we think of everything that we are collaboratively developing with our educators, you know, 1A, 1B, the scope and sequence, the instructional infrastructure that we've been talking about, if we think of that as the what, the knowledge base of current understanding of students and how students learn, and the current understanding of best practice in education, if we think of that as the what, this is really the partner piece, which is the how for educators. Educators need time to not only learn about the pieces of the instructional infrastructure and best practices that we are developing and implementing, but they need time to collaborate with other educators within their buildings, within their grid levels, their departments, but also across buildings. And they also need the time to really understand how to implement these practices. You know, instructional refinement, if we will, takes time. And it takes a lot of very intentional time. And so we're in a very useful process right now of gathering feedback from different groups of educators on what is it that they need? What does this time need to look like for them to be able to learn and for them to be able to collaborate with one another and think about implementation? And this is time that would not detract from their own planning time or the staff meeting time that buildings have in order to address issues that are building-specific, more nuts-and-bolts types of things. And so that is the feedback that we are currently gathering that will help us then collaboratively create the guidance for how that universal learning time would be approached.
Thank you, Robin. This is our third work session on this subject. We met originally in May of 2020. We met in January of this year, and now we're meeting tonight. So this just gives you a snapshot of our original proposed schedule. Originally, we had elementary starting at 7:45 to 2:45 to get to seven hours. High schools weren't changing. They were staying at the 8:30 like we set them in 2019. And then our middle schools and K8s were seeing real minor adjustments go into an 8:40 to 3:40 tier. If you remember, we had a late start on Wednesdays. So elementaries would start at 8:45, and that was to accommodate the professional learning time. The other schools slid accordingly one hour. We would provide transportation for the later start. So transportation would drop off 10 minutes before the bell time, so around 8:35. Now, we talked a lot about some of the exceptions, right? There's a lot of exceptions out there if you think about the proximity of some of our schools and the traffic impacts. We weren't able to meet some of these bell times. So some of those schools didn't see the adjustments like some of our other elementary and middle schools and K8s. I think it's important because tonight, we're going to focus a lot on the feedback, and we're going to focus on how we've adjusted our plan based on the feedback that we've received. So I want to start by talking about how we've shared information. I think it's extremely important because we have communicated a lot on this. So following our January 26th work session, Dr. Anderson sent out an email to over 31,000 recipients. That was representative of a little over 20,000 families. We held a Let's Talk Forum. That was with a live panel discussion. Then I believe Margaret Crespo, Dr. Crespo, and Robin. We held two live Spanish forums. We did a Spanish-language-only survey. And then we also sent out a Spanish-only text message. We presented to our principals advisory committee, our district accountability committee, our district parent council, our teachers advisory committee, Latino parent advisory committee, BBA and the Board of Education. We have a webpage set up for the Equal School Day. We have a webpage set up for professional learning time. Daily Camera ran an article. We ran several articles on social media. We sent out a letter via The Spot, which is our parent newsletter. And then Robin and I both sent out a letter in March with an update to all families in the district. So what did we hear through that feedback? So again, Dr. Anderson's letter was sent over to, sent out to over 31,000 recipients. Elementary-level recipients accounted for over 16,000. I think that's important because elementary schools are the, seeing the biggest impact in bell time changes. We had over 433 respond. Now, there was two ways to respond. There was a survey when we asked, how can we support you with this change? And then there was an open prompt. So to both, we had about 550 responses. So please keep that in mind as you're thinking through this. But the 433 was to the survey questions representing 31 schools. And you can see on the chart here how they were represented. So as you can see, Eisenhower had the most. Again, Eisenhower and Bear Creek are seeing some of the biggest changes with this initiative. So some big themes came out of the feedback. And I'll tell you, we left this open. So the survey and the open prompt was open the entire month of February. At the end of February, we went through and collected it. And the feedback, we broke into some major themes that we're going to talk about tonight. So 7:45 is challenging for some families. And you'll see here some of the feedback. I'm not going to read through these all. Kids won't get enough sleep because they get up too early. Mornings will be rushed and stressful. Teachers need before-school childcare since they have to drop off before 7:45. Walking and biking will decrease, and tardies will increase. And then open enrollment schools have longer commutes and need more travel time. Well, we've talked about this many times. When you're changing bell times, everybody's needs are very unique. Every family has different challenges. Please keep that in mind as we're talking about how we've adjusted the plan according to the feedback that we've received. Some of the other feedback that we heard was Wednesdays would be challenging for professional learning time. And again, this is some of the feedback that we got regarding that theme. Young students need a consistent routine. The irregular morning schedule is difficult for work schedules. Full professional development days are preferred by some families versus having weekly PLT. Early release would work better because many families already have afternoon childcare arranged. And then families employed in the service and hospitality industry have more flexibility with their schedule on Mondays. Other comments and suggestions we received, my student is losing instructional time, which is true at three schools. Pioneer Elementary School is at a seven-hour and 20-minute day. Sanchez is at a seven-hour day. And Netherland Elementary School is right now at a seven-hour day. So with the professional learning time on Wednesdays, that hour will be lost for those three schools. The majority of schools, however, will be gaining instructional time. I think that's important to note. There is too much disruption already on top of a disruptive year. We have talked to families just about the pandemic and the recent shooting here in Boulder that has came up. This schedule is not supported by sleep research. We will spend a little bit of time tonight talking through the research that we've done as a district. Seven-hour days are too long for elementary-age students. K5 and 6, 8, K8 should have different schedules. So we did hear from some families, they like the earlier start time for the elementary students, but they like the later start time for K8s. Very problematic in the transportation world at our K8s trying to put those at two different times. My open enrollment choice was based on the old schedule. Can I change it? We'll talk about that. Full PD days in the middle of the week are inconvenient for families, and we'll talk about that today. We did get some comments and supported the plan, and you can see those here. Soft starts have been great this year and would make it earlier, would make this earlier start time easier. We'll talk a little bit about soft starts. And then as a parent of two students in the BVSD system, I support this change completely. I'm going to let, Robin, you want to cover this one?
Sure. Thanks for the reminder. We continue to hear overwhelmingly positive feedback from our building leaders and our educators. It actually still, after all of these years, is probably the number-one topic that I get asked about when talking with teachers and leaders. So they're very excited about the idea of having additional time in the school day. As we know, just like with family schedules, you know, it doesn't work absolutely perfectly seamlessly in every single aspect of every school. But nevertheless, we continue to hear positive, overwhelmingly positive support for this concept. And on this slide, you see some actual comments that we have gotten from educators that with a six-and-a-half-hour day, we really struggle to do everything that we need to do. We are happy to have universal breakfast, but it cuts into instructional time. We need time for social-emotional learning so that we know how kids are doing, especially now more than ever. This is the right thing for kids. You know, I would want that for my own kids. And thanks for equalizing the contact time. And again, soft starts have worked very well. And this schedule is a primary contributor to our equity work by standardizing the amount of instruction that students have in every building across the district.
So the revised plan, and what we presented tonight was the feedback. And I can assure you that we have went through every email that we've received, all of the survey questions, the open prompts, et cetera. And what we're presenting tonight is a revised plan based on the feedback that we received. I want to just emphasize that there are some really unique needs out there, and we can't meet everyone's needs. We had some goals and some constraints around budgets, et cetera, trying to meet the seven-hour day. So what we're bringing tonight is in thought of everything that we've talked about, the goals that we've had, still our strategy to get to seven hours, et cetera. So high level, and I'm going to go through each one of these. This is the revised plan. So move professional development days back to Monday. Right now, they're on Wednesdays, moving those back to Monday. Shift start time at all levels by five minutes, and provide an optional elementary soft start. And then late start Wednesdays for professional learning time with district-funded supervision at our elementary and K8 schools. So this was some unexpected feedback that we got through the survey prompts. And Robin could probably speak to this better than I can. But originally, our professional development days were on Mondays. We switched those to Wednesdays this year to be in alignment with the professional learning time. We had heard that it would be really confusing to have professional development day on a Monday and a one-hour late start on a Wednesday. So we were trying to line those up, thinking we were doing something good. Now, this would require board approval. So this will have to come back to the board if we get your support on this. And I think we have a plan to do that. But this is, again, responsive to the feedback that we received. Mondays are more flexible for service industry workers. We heard that from a lot of our Spanish-speaking community. PD days that create a three-day weekend are preferred by our families, makes sense. And that full day off in the middle of the week is disruptive for families. So the proposal, again, would be to move these from Wednesdays back to Mondays. Rob?
And board members, just to clarify, this would come back to you because it would be a change to the academic calendar for the 21-22 school year. So we would bring this to you for study and action.
Good clarification. Thank you, Rob. All right. Second thing, another big theme that we had heard, shift start times. 7:45 was too early. So we're going to talk a little bit about shifting that by five minutes and having an optional start, soft start. And this is in relationship to 7:45 being too early. This is a revised proposal that you can see. Elementary and preschool would be on a 7:50 to 2:50 tier. High schools would move from 8:35 to 3:50. And then middle schools and preschool, or PK through 8s would go to an 8:45 to 3:45. That's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. On Wednesdays, everyone would start an hour later. So elementaries at 8:50, high schools at 9:35, middle schools and PK 8s would go to 9:45. Again, I'm not going to go through all of these exceptions, but I'll use the same scenario where a lot of our schools are close in proximity. Think of Southern Hills and Fairview or Monarch K8, Monarch High School. We have to keep some separation there. Similar to BCSIS and High Peaks, we have to have separation with those schools. So we do have some nuances in this bell schedule, but the majority of our schools will be on these tiers. I'm going to spend a little time talking through this. And this is tough to see on your screen, and I apologize. But in the far-left-hand column, you'll see the school name, and then the current AM bell and the proposed AM bell. Now, there are only four schools that are being changed by more than 15 minutes through this initiative. So those schools are Bear Creek, Columbine. Bear Creek's changing by 40 minutes. Columbine changing by 25 minutes. Eisenhower by 50, and Mesa by 35 minutes. So I think that's important. The majority of our schools are changing by 15 minutes or less. Middle schools, you'll see their five-to-10-minute changes. And then our K8s, five-to-18-minute changes. You'll see Eldorado, a slight adjustment by 18 minutes. Again, just trying to tier our transportation as effectively as we can. Add one more thing here. This does not affect charter schools. So please understand that. The charters are not part of the Equal School Day initiative. So the rationale with five minutes is, again, responsive to the feedback. Is we talked to a number of our principals. They felt like at the most, principals at the most effective schools, five minutes would help. And then the optional soft start would get them closer to the eight o'clock bell time. Transportation remains cost-neutral if we shift the entire system by five minutes. 7:50 is already tested throughout the system. We have six schools in the district that start before eight o'clock. We continue to hear a tremendous amount of support from our instructional staff that students are ready to learn first thing in the morning. We'll talk a little bit more about the sleep research, but it is supported by sleep research. And then we do feel strongly that biking and walking is tremendously successful at schools that start at 7:50. Crestview is, if you look at them in particular, they're one of our strongest walking and biking schools in the district, and they start at 7:50 in the morning currently. And then the optional 10-minute soft start responsive to the feedback. Some principals and parents have already been utilizing this this year during the pandemic. Has been tremendously successful. This is a little bit of a challenge. When I say optional, we're not going to be able to do this at all schools. So again, if you think about a school like BCSIS and High Peaks where we have 15 minutes between bell times and primarily their mode of transportation is parents dropping their students off, we can't have that 10-minute soft start or we'll have all those parents dropping off at one time. So this is going to be school-by-school dependent, and we're going to have to make those decisions in collaboration with the executive directors, school leadership, et cetera. So what sleep research tells us, a lot of research. We know that adequate amount of quality sleep is important for the health and learning for all of our students. So we've examined, we've spent a significant amount of time examining the existing research and the published expert opinions related to school start times at all levels. And this slide shows us a sample of some of the research and opinions of experts that make us comfortable with the proposed start time. So I'm going to go through these. Dr. Judith Owens, Director of Pediatric Sleep Disorders at Boston's Children's Hospital. Dr. Eric Zhu, Instructor of Pediatrics at Harvard Medical Center. And Dr. David Zauza, Author of How the Brain Works. All support learning elementary start times as early as 7:30 in the morning for peak focus and aligning with pre-adolescent circadian rhythms. Dr. Lisa Meltzer of National Jewish Health consulted with both the Cherry Creek School District and Littleston School Districts in Denver, and presented about the many benefits of starting secondary schools' students later and elementary students earlier. They just completed a three-year study at Cherry Creek that was released in the last week. And again, showed significant benefits for secondary schools, or secondary students with minimal impacts to our elementary students starting earlier than secondary. I think that is in alignment with what we talked about when we changed high school bell times and what drove that initiative. What experience tells us? And we'll leave this to the expert.
Yeah, thanks. So we've also spent quite a bit of time looking at and thinking about what some national experts have to tell us about what happens at school with earlier start times. So this really builds on the concept of sleep research. But then what is it that educators see when students are at school earlier? And what this information tells us actually aligns very closely with what our own BVSD staff tell us, that when elementary students start earlier, they have increased energy, increased focus, and there's increased learning in the earlier morning times. One interesting piece, too, that we've talked more and more about lately is the idea of fewer morning transitions, that when school starts earlier, there is less of a need for many families to have before-school care. And so not only is it a cost savings for families to not have to pay for before-school care, but the transition to come directly from home to school is obviously less impactful for students and families. And what we do know, if we spend times at schools with younger children, that as children get more tired toward the end of the day, they do need more support with social-emotional and sometimes behavioral issues. And so we also spent some time really talking to the educators in our own system who are one of the six schools that do already start before 8:00 AM. One is Crestview. If you recall, Crestview went to an earlier start time in 2013 to respond to the floods because we all remember that, you know, they had to recuperate lost learning time because of the amount of time that that school was closed. And as a result, they actually elected to continue that start time because of the reasons that we just talked about on the last slide, that kids were more alert, that they feel like morning, you know, an earlier morning is prime learning time. So therefore, what they do at Crestview is they prioritize math and literacy, you know, those core academic subjects in the morning. And data also tells us that they have experienced significant growth in academics over the last four years. Emerald also, they talk about how also they find that their students are awake and ready to learn, and they also start at 7:50, just like Crestview. And they're looking forward to additional time because even though they start earlier, they have universal breakfast, and that does cut into their instructional time, which they feel the impact of definitely. So one wondering that had been presented to us a variety of times is, well, if schools move to an earlier start time, will tardies increase? So our friends, our data crunchers, actually went through the data because we said we really have to know what we're talking about. And it's very interesting that the median number of tardies, so median like as in, you know, mean, median in mode, of tardies of students in the earliest start times is the lowest, followed by an increase in tardies, schools that start between 8:00 and 8:00 AM, and then also greater than the earliest start times, schools that start after 8:15. So very interesting data that we have collected from our own schools.
So the feedback we got on late start Wednesdays for professional learning time, again, this, I will say, is probably the most challenging one we've had because what works at elementaries doesn't work at secondaries and vice versa. So we feel what we're proposing is responsive to the feedback we heard and works well in a number of ways. We still firmly believe in the benefits of professional learning time for both our teachers and our students who ultimately benefit from the additional time. So. So responsive to the feedback in a way, it creates a consistent schedule at no cost to families. One thing we heard was childcare should not be a burden on families. So we have found a no-cost solution to families by providing supervision at elementaries and K eights. This still supports the weekly instructional cycle, a cycle allowing for adjustments midweek to be responsive to students' needs. Working closely with our professional learning department and our steering committee, they felt like having it midweek would, and Robin could talk about this, is most impactful when it's midweek, not early in the week when everything's chaotic, a lot going on on a Monday, for example. We're very experienced with late start Wednesdays. A number of our schools already do this. So most secondary schools are familiar with them and fewer families have to adjust by leaving them on Wednesdays. And Wednesdays also maximizes the number of professional learning time hours that we have. As you know, we have fewer Mondays in the calendar year, so we have eight additional hours of professional learning time if we keep them on Mondays. Open enrollment, we heard from a few families that they enrolled in a school and they would like to enroll back to their neighborhood school because of this initiative. We will make sure to accommodate them through an administrative transfer. The link is here, but if they can't access this link, they can always call our open enrollment office or an enrollment office, and we will help them through that process. So like I said, feedback ended February twenty-eighth. We really took middle or all of March and the beginning of April to think about all options to bring back to the board. When we were thinking about shifting elementary only by five, ten, or fifteen minutes. To get elementary from seven forty-five to eight o'clock by that fifteen-minute shift, not adjusting the other schools, was over a five million dollar cost impact. And it's not something I can even bring to you because it's not feasible due to the bus driver shortage that we are currently facing. We talked about shifting all levels by ten or fifteen minutes. And I want to spend a little bit of time talking about secondary schools that might get out at four o'clock. If you all remember some of the communication that we got back when we talked about high schools ending at four, you know, you think of doctor's appointments, for example, how challenging it is for parents to get their kids a doctor's appointment, athletics, activities, students, high school students driving during rush hour. All legitimate reasons that we listened to in two thousand nineteen and we adjusted our plan accordingly. We looked at shifting elementary schools to nine fifteen, which wouldn't put them, they wouldn't get out of school till four fifteen, which does not align with any of the research that we've done. Professional learning time, we looked at switching from a late start to an early release. Very problematic for athletics, activities, et cetera. We looked at moving professional learning time to Mondays or Fridays. I'll talk a little bit about, think about substitutes. Our substitute numbers increase significantly on Mondays or Fridays. We've had a challenge for years filling those positions. Late start for secondary versus early release for elementary. Extremely costly for transportation as bus drivers are sitting around longer and you've got to pay them to sit. Bussing at normal time versus bussing at late start time. We can go one of two ways on this. We've always bussed for the later start time at those schools to do it. So the idea was let's continue what we've been doing as it has worked well and provide supervision at those schools that may need it. District-funded supervision for SAC or lifelong learning. As we have talked about tonight, we are looking at district-funded supervision, not through SAC. We would be funding paraeducators to provide the supervision at elementaries and K eights. More full PD days rather than weekly professional learning time. And again, what we've heard from our educators or professional learning department is that more frequent opportunities for professional learning time is better than just individual standalone days, monthly or bi-monthly. And then professional learning time outside the school day to create a consistent length of day. We looked at that. It was really outside the contract with BVEA. So those were all items that we looked at. So I'll end, this isn't the final slide, but what we have left to do as we're thinking about moving forward. Tonight, we're providing our final update on the Equal School Day. Through the month of May, we will be working with schools, and this is all assuming if we move forward with this, on family supports as we're thinking about supervision. We still need to finalize all of our school start times, get those to the principals so they can start building their schedules. And then we'll start the bus registration process, similar to what we did this past year during the pandemic, asking parents to register for bus so we know who, what our actual ridership is so that we can plan our routes accordingly. In June and July, we'll finalize the bus routes, we'll finalize the bus registration process. And then in August, schools of course would start on the new bell time schedule. So in conclusion, and we've went through a lot, and we're on twenty-nine or slide thirty here. So in conclusion, this is where we're at, moving to professional development days from Wednesdays back to Monday. Again, that's a change in the academic calendar that would have to come to the board for approval. Shift the start time at all levels by five minutes. So elementary, seven fifty, middle school and PK eight would go to eight forty-five. High schools would move from eight thirty to eight thirty-five. And then holding our late start Wednesdays, our professional learning time would stay on Wednesdays using a late start model with district-funded supervision at elementaries and K eights. So with that, we will open it up for questions.
All right. Thank you so much for all of this. And I particularly wanted to thank you for just showing all the different things that you weighed based on the feedback and really giving a lot of detail about why you ended up at the direction you are. That's just something that's really helpful to me as a board member to understand what the considerations were and then how we landed where we are. So I really just wanted to share my appreciation. All right. So who wants to start with a question? Oh, and let me clarify something else. We're not going to vote on this. So this is an operating, you know, an operating decision that supports our strategic plan initiatives. So generally, we don't vote for those. So I just wanted to also, in terms of process, let the board know about that. Hey, Richard?
Just a couple of questions. One is throughout the presentation, SEL was mentioned quite a bit that it would give more time for SEL. And I guess the question that I have is shouldn't SEL be an embedded component throughout the day? It shouldn't be like ten minutes before school starts or ten minutes before instructional time starts? So I'm wondering what that message is as it relates to SEL. And then the other question that I have is the, well, let's just stop there. I spaced out my other question. It'll come back.
Sure. That is a great question about SEL. So SEL is both a universal support for students, which is embedded in the way that all staff interact with students and all staff approach their work with students. But in addition, we have curricula at our schools which involve components like daily community meeting as a way to both build community and proactively teach lessons that have an SEL focus. There are lessons specific to the SEL curricula like conflict resolution, making friends, sharing, things like that that do take time because they are whole-class lessons. And then there is SEL targeted support, which is time for either teachers or special education providers or the school counselors that fortunately we have at every one of our elementaries to be able to work with small groups or with individuals. So both of those would exist, but it is definitely embedded in the way that the teachers approach their instruction in their small groups and their classes every day.
Thank you. Got the other question. The other question is, at the beginning of the presentation, you also mentioned that it would be cost neutral?
That is correct.
So?
Well, let me rephrase that. Cost neutral from a transportation perspective.
Okay.
There is an increase in cost for the supervision associated with supervision at elementaries and K eights.
And do we have any idea about how, what that would be?
We are somewhere around one hundred and fifty thousand is what we are currently estimating. That is an ongoing cost.
And just a comment, and I know this for a fact because when my wife was teaching at University of Hill, and she taught there for twenty-eight years, and then when universal breakfast came up, that was a big, big, big issue for teachers. And it seems like the early start would probably alleviate some of those particular issues. So I just want to make a comment on that.
Okay. Lisa?
I have two questions. First, I'm wondering, just sort of as a matter of logistics, how a soft start works in the buildings, being as secure as they are, what that looks like? And then in terms of specific schools that are impacted, it feels like Pioneer is losing a significant amount of time. And I'm wondering, I don't know exactly what I'm wondering, just what does that mean? Or how can we make sure that they're not going to be harmed by this? Or what sort of mitigation measures do we have in place?
Sure. Those are two great questions. So the first one about how does soft start work? Well, soft start has been school-specific this year and is really a very new concept that was created in the pandemic, right? As we know that we've had to social distance and not allow our usual drop-off and pickup procedures. And so soft start has developed differently in different places according to the needs and the desires of each school. But really, soft start, as we work toward understanding how that would best work, you know, that is a way for teachers and counselors to have individual check-ins with kids, to do just a little bit of pre-work at the beginning of the day, help students who might need a little bit more transition time come in. But there is a way to help support in an individual or a small group way for just a little bit of time at the beginning of the day. And also allow for interactions among students, right? You know, there are some, there has been some talk about doing what they call micro clubs at the beginning of the day, a small drama club, a small choir club. So there's a variety of ways within, you know, the guidance that we collaboratively work together that we can work at each school to help support the long-term outcomes of the strategic plan and also be able to make this work for the specific schools.
And then logistically, there's like a drop-off window, right? So if there's a ten-minute soft start and we move to seven fifty, right? That dropping off between seven fifty and eight o'clock, everybody doesn't have to be there when the bell rings at seven fifty. There's a window into Robin's point, which allows kids to transition. Not everybody's there at once. You know, folks who need a little extra time in the morning to kind of get things together can do that. And I believe that's a component of that as well.
And to your second question, Lisa, what about Pioneer? So we're working closely with Pioneer at making sure that we do address that at very specific school-wide extended day opportunities that would give every child in the school additional time outside of that seven-hour day. So we will be bringing you additional information about that as it develops. But it's something that we have been thinking about and working with the community on addressing. Yeah.
Thank you for that. I would be really interested, once we move forward with this, if it's possible halfway through the school year, to see some things from these schools that have the highest impacts from Pioneer and Eisenhower and a few of the other folks about how things are working out and what kinds of challenges we were concerned about that didn't appear or what sorts of things really aren't working.
Kitty?
Yeah, thanks for all this work. Mine isn't a question, it's just a comment. I really appreciated you telling us how many emails went out and how many responses we got because we don't have, as a board, we don't have any perspective on, you know, how many people are contacting us. And this was point zero three percent who responded at all, and some of them were positive. So it's good to know that while there were families who were quite concerned, it wasn't a large number of them.
Donna?
Just quickly, I want to thank you because I feel, I came in here with a lot of questions and you answered them and that there's so many parents that emailed us during all of this. And I came in with questions, which I think parents are going to be happy that you met the community, you met the, you kind of listened to what parents had to say, you listened to what the staff had to say, and you made adjustments accordingly. So I wanted to commend you for that. And then my only question, I hate these things. My only question is the paraeducators for supervision. I love that idea for the Wednesdays. Are there enough to supervise them, number of kids that may need to participate in this drop-off time?
Well, that's a great question. And since this is a one-hour time that usually falls within the timeframe of a seven-hour day, this would continue to be within a paraeducator's contract time. So let's just say if a paraeducator usually is there for seven hours a day, part of their seven hours on Wednesday would be that late start supervision.
Yeah. My question was more about will there be enough paraeducators to supervise the number of children?
There, what, so we met with the steering committee and talked about this because it's my concern that we might have four or five hundred kids that show up. And based on the research that we've done, because a lot of schools are providing this, they're not getting a significant number of kids to show up. So we feel pretty comfortable with our numbers right now, and we'll have to adjust as we move forward. What we heard a lot is a lot of parents will take advantage of it the first month or two of school, and then they find they like the one-hour later start on Wednesdays and they adjust accordingly, and they adjust their daily routine. So I believe we're just going to have to let it play out, but I feel comfortable with our planning up to this point.
Good to hear because if they did need it for work schedule, for example, it's there. But I'm glad to hear that you did the research part on that. Thank you.
I don't have a question, just a comment, and I've made this comment every single time we've talked about this. I lived through the Crestview change when that happened. My son was an elementary student there. And nobody stopped biking to school, nobody stopped walking to school. The bus came earlier, it was no big deal. And like Robin said, they liked it so much that they elected to keep it. And the transition was not as big of a deal as I think people thought at first. And we were so happy that they were back in their school, and it was just, it was a great experience all around. So I've lived through it and it was fine.
I do have, excuse me, one more question and one request. When people are talking, could you get really close to your microphone because I have a hard time hearing? And the question was, what about schools that are providing SAC on Wednesday mornings now? You know, for schools that currently have late start. And how is that morning SAC going to coincide with the supervision?
So that I'm not saying anything correct is we need to, I need to get with Renee Williams to answer that question. I believe I know the answer, but I'm not exactly sure. So I'll get you an answer to that.
Thank you. Because I mean, obviously, there are parents who are paying for SAC, and then I don't think they'd appreciate it much if other kids were, well, not at SAC, but supervised for free.
So I'm still trying to get my mind around the soft start. So if you make it like choirs or kids have to come, it seems to me it becomes a hard start. And it also feels like it could be punitive because you say, you know, Emily, you have to come early because you need extra time. So I'm not against it. I'm just curious about how it's going to work. And I'll look forward, like Lisa said, to kind of an update on it because I know you've tried it, but during the pandemic feels a little different than doing it regular. So I just don't know how you keep it from becoming a hard start or something, like I said, punitive or something required.
So to give you an example, the two schools that I know are doing it well, Superior Elementary School and Lafayette Elementary School. And what they have, if you think about a seven fifty start, the first bell goes off at seven fifty and a second bell goes off at eight o'clock. So the eight o'clock is when you start really counting tardy. So what you don't have is that mad rush of students getting into the door, putting their backpacks down, and it's all an urgency to get into their chairs, right? So it just allows for a smoother transition. Now, some of these schools have a fifteen-minute soft start right now. And what those students are doing is they're getting there and they're taking that fifteen minutes to meet with their teacher and really engage. And I mean, Kent talks about it just fantastically, just how there's a deep connection with those students that are really taking advantage of that fifteen minutes. Now, some parents are walking and biking. They want the additional fifteen minutes just to engage with their child and get to school. So again, we have two lessons that have been tremendously successful. The feedback that we've gotten from our parents has been extremely The feedback that we've gotten from our parents has been extremely positive around soft starts. So I, I do believe that it's something we need to think about as we're moving forward. Like I said, it won't work at all schools, but I do believe it's a model we want to continue to look at and research and make sure that we're not losing instructional time, but we are allowing that soft start, that, just kind of that softer approach to the start of the school day.
So that soft start time is not counted as instructional time, right?
It would be. So seven fifty to two fifty would be the seven hour day. So if they do a soft start, it would still be seven fifty to two fifty, but again, the second bell would go off at eight o'clock, so it would still be part of the instructional time.
Quasi instructional time because not all your, okay.
Yep.
I had a question. Have you seen any improvements with traffic flow with soft start or does it, or in the pandemic, does it not matter?
You know, that's a good question. I would say with the pandemic, it's been hard to analyze, but it could help us out a lot saying that, Tina, but we haven't analyzed that. That's a great question, though.
My neighborhood school is Foothill, so we have a pretty significant issue backing into Broadway, and it just made me think that might help, especially if people continue to use individual vehicles getting to school instead of busing.
When we visited Ryan Elementary, when the, whenever the four days started, she's, the principal there said that it definitely was a, was a difference in traffic. They're doing a soft start too, and she said that she liked it so much that they hoped it could continue.
Okay. Richard?
Just a quick question regarding the, the professional learning time and, and the school supervision of kids that need it. My question is, a lot of the teachers, you know, they really value their paraeducators that work with them in the classroom, and, and I'm wondering if the paraeducators, sometimes they do participate in professional learning time with their teachers. Do you see that changing at all? Because I, you know, I'm talking about my experience at Uni Hill, where I saw a lot of the parent, professional, paraeducators working with teachers side by side as they're learning together.
Yeah, that's a great question. That does occur, and in the buildings where I have worked, where we've had a late start that has periodically been, been the situation as well. And the way we handled that, both at Manhattan Middle School and at Aspen Creek, Pre-K eight when we, when we did that, is we would some, we would do a rotating schedule so that as we were having professional learning with teachers and paraeducators, we made sure that no one was excluded so that we could rotate our paraeducators so that they were with the teachers on those times that we did do a collective, a collective PD experience.
Sounds like the principals have a lot of coordinating work to do, huh?
Okay. And just to clarify, the high schools have late start Wednesday, but they don't right now, right?
In the middle of the pandemic, they don't.
They don't? Okay.
You know, I, I say that. Fairview has, they're doing something on Wednesdays with a late start, but they, yeah, I believe Fairview is right now. I can't say for sure, but I believe during the pandemic, a lot of them had lost the late start.
All right. It might make sense to do some reminding of some high school parents that may have forgotten about that aspect, such as myself. So all of a sudden, I was like, is that new? And I'm like, oh, no, no, it's not. All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, just one quick question, this is for Robin. You all received the survey that Pioneer Elementary School did with their parents, correct? Did you get that?
The, the survey about the, which survey are you referring to?
It's the survey that was conducted at Pioneer Elementary School regarding the equal school day, and they had a lot of recommendations and they had a lot of other things in there. Are those going to be taken into consideration when you talk with Pioneer?
Oh, yes. We have been talking a lot to date so far with both the, the principal and the assistant principal on how to take those recommendations and really make sure that we're paying close attention to the needs because, you're right, a lot of time went into the time collaborative work where they landed on the, on their current, on their current start and end time. And so we need to make sure that we, we do have those taken into consideration as we move forward. But we feel good about this at this point, yeah.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the work that you all put together on this.
All right. Rob, sorry.
Thank you, Tina. I just want to commend our team, Rob Price, Robin Fernandez, everybody who's put countless hours into not only developing what I think is an incredibly thoughtful and thorough plan, but re-engaging our community, having those conversations and coming back with a plan that I think is even better. Board members, as we talk about the, the immense challenge that we face in closing and eliminating our achievement gaps, our opportunity gaps and disproportionality, I can't think of two things that are more important than more instructional time and more time with training for our teachers. As we think about the things that we're taking on and, and taking head on, those things are critical to, to I believe our, our continued success, and so I'm very excited to bring this plan forward. And just a thank you to our team for, I think, doing just an incredible job in, in, in putting this plan together.
You've probably covered this, but can you remind me what, that, how you're going to let parents know and what the rollout is? We have to vote on one thing, I know, changing the calendar.
Right now, we're planning on sending a letter out tomorrow that will go to all families with this initiative, just as an update with the revised plan, et cetera. So, and then we'll communicate bus registration as we get a little bit closer to the middle of May. We'll talk about bus routes, et cetera, as we're thinking about where we're at with changing bell times, et cetera. So updated letter tomorrow that will go out to all families with this revised plan.
So Rob, if I can also say one thing about the academic calendar. So as is always the truth, one thing affects, you know, two things and affects three things, is that there may be, well, we know that there are a couple of implications for the larger academic calendar moving forward with this, if we move forward with this. So we will look back at, yes, the October and February PD days, there are only two in question, moving from Wednesday back to Monday, but there may be a couple other tiny tweaks, implications as a result of a couple of these things, so that would also be what we would bring back to you as just the minor tweaks in the study and approval of, of a revised academic calendar for both 21, 22, and 22, 23.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So our next meeting is at 6:30, and so we can take it from here from conference rooms because we're doing this Zoomed? That's more of a question. Or you can go home and take it from home?
I, I think, you know, it's the preference of the board because we will be on a Zoom, we'll all be together virtually, but there isn't a need for us all to be in the same room. And so we have conference rooms available or if members want to go home and then they could join that Zoom from, from home.
All right.